All right, good afternoon. The time is 1:30 and the date is July 1st, 2021. And I will call to order the July 1st, 2021, meeting of the Zoning Appeals Board of the City of West Palm Beach. And I'll ask our Board Secretary, Ms. Hope White, to please call the roll.
Christopher Cameron.
Present.
Malika Barlow.
Present.
Michael Hyman.
Present.
Michael Wood.
Present.
Alfred Fields.
Present.
Jonathan Burgess.
Present.
Christopher Hagan. Let the record reflect that Christopher Hagan is not present.
Okay, then we have a quorum for our meeting today. But the first item is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Could rise, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business today is to approve the meeting minutes of our June 3rd, 2021, meeting. And those were distributed to the board members in the packet that was sent to us. And does anybody have any additions or suggested revisions? Okay, would somebody make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 3rd, 2021, meeting?
Some of.
And would somebody second it?
Second.
Okay. And let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are unanimously approved. The next item is the report from the planning staff.
Good morning, good morning, good afternoon, Chair. For the record, Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator, and so filling in for John Rosch, and there's no report from staff.
Okay. Okay, next is the remarks by the chairperson for today, the vice chairperson. All right, the matters before the zoning board of appeal are judicial, quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicants will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by the city staff, who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. The city's staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as by emails or voicemails into the record. The applicants will then have the opportunity for a rebuttal. At that stage, the floor will then be closed. The board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and then a vote. And four votes are required for approval. I take it the mask mandate is still in effect in the City of West Palm Beach, so I would ask that everybody keep their masks on for the duration of the meeting. Unless you're speaking, either at the podium, you can remove your mask, as I am right now, speaking. But once you're concluded speaking, if you would put your mask back on. All right, so the next item is for declaration of any ex parte communications. And we will just go right down the line. Mr. Fields, do you have any ex parte communications to declare?
No ex parte communications.
Okay, Mr. Woods?
No ex parte communications.
Ms. Barlow?
No ex parte communications.
Mr. Hyman?
No ex parte communications.
And Mr. Burgess?
No ex parte communications.
Okay, then we will move on to the, and myself, I've had no ex parte communication with any of the persons who had appeared before us today. I will now move to the public hearing regarding the specific cases that are on the agenda for today. The first, well, first, we're going to have a swearing-in of the speaker. So if anybody's going to speak today, I'd ask you to rise and be sworn in by Ms. White, please.
Also, Mr. Chair, I want to make you aware that Mr. Hagan is absent, and so that makes Mr. Fields a voting member.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be truthful? Thank you.
Okay, so there are no continued cases as on our agenda. They're the new cases. First case is case number 3392. And I'll ask Ms. White if she could please read the description of the case.
A request by James Payne Jr. of Law Office of James C. Payne Jr. on behalf of Shannon and Ryland Howell for a variance from the front setback requirements of Section 94-72.2A of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations on a residential lot to allow the construction of an attached two-car garage with an 18-foot front setback where 25 feet is required. The approximately .26 acre site is located at 251 Seville Row within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Okay, so we will hear from the applicant first.
Good afternoon. My name is James Payne, representing Shannon Howell and her family. Shannon Howell is here, if you have any questions for her. This is, this first drawing is the existing condition of the site on the left side and the proposed construction on the right. The part of the construction relevant to this variance is the garage in the front. As you can see, we're requesting a seven-foot relief from the 25-foot for a total of 18-foot. The staff report is very thorough and indicates that we meet all the conditions. I'm not going to go into a long speech, but I'd like to point out a few things that I think mitigate our request. And one is that the garage is not across the entire facade of the house. It's only, it's smallest it needs to be on the southeast corner. The house next door is on the corner of Olive, and it has a corner side lock setback, so it is actually 12 and a half feet away from the road. So we're further back than they are. Then, as you proceed east along Seville, there's a variety of newer houses that have been built up to the 25-foot line. So there's a nice variety in the setbacks. There's a lot of mature trees. We have a couple on each corner of our lot. And I feel, and I hope you'll agree, that this is going to be acceptable and a benefit to the neighborhood. And I can conclude my presentation right there. The staff report recommends approval. And if you have any questions about it, I should go through the rest of the drawings, though. Let me see how this, oh yeah, there's the pictures of the house. It's a typical Florida bungalow. The garage is going to match it. Those are the proposed plans. Well, the one on the far left is the existing plan. The middle is the proposed ground floor. And the one to the far right is the second floor, which is back, complies with all setbacks and is not related to this variance. That's part of an addition. And the garage, of course, is an addition as well on the, on the front side of the house. That's the house as it is now above with the second floor, which is beyond. It's set back, you know, 40 or 50 feet from the front of the main house. So it may have, it appears bigger than it's going to appear from the street. And that, once again, is the second floor also shows the garage to the far left on the bottom with the same style, matching the Florida bungalow appearance. And once again, rear elevations before and after, and the west side. And I forgot to mention, we've made the effort to have a side entry garage, which is generally preferred than the garage door facing the street. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, do any of the board members have a question for the applicant? Mr. Burgess?
I have a question about the condition, and so it might be for staff. So the condition on the recommendation for approval is about the 75% landscape requirement. And my understanding of that is that 75% of the front setback has to be landscape area. So my question is, it's a clarification because the, the part that is not 75% landscape, that would include the driveway and the proposed garage included in the 25% allowed, right?
Correct. 75% of 1,000 square feet of the front must be landscaped. Again, I'm sitting in for Raffaelo, who unfortunately is out sick today.
The site plan appears to have a hardscape calculation for the driveway, existing and proposed driveway. And it was just a clarification.
I don't know, she was just saying the driveway when it comes in, because you're giving her a variance to put, you're giving them a variance to put the garage into the setback. We weren't going to penalize them necessarily for that because you're taking it away. I think the 75% was just talking about when they put the driveway and whatever it put in, it still had to make an effort to meet the 75%. Again, that's my understanding how the report was written, because you're giving them a variance to put it there in the front. But we want to make sure when they do a driveway, it can only be like a 10-foot wide or however that denotes.
The 75% is only for the leftover space that doesn't include the bank.
Correct. Because you're giving them a variance for the actual structure.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then I guess we'll go on to the planning staff.
I'm sorry, I'll second it. It's not in a good mood today. I'm going to repeat what Mr. Payne went over. He talked about where the subject site is located, and as you can see from the arrow, area is located within, Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator, let me back up. Within a single-family neighborhood on the south end of the city. Right now, the code across 25-foot setback from the front, applicant providing 810s, so we're talking about a seven-foot variance from the front. And as you can see from the home, as you already seen the pictures, that the house is set back pretty much from the property line. Let me get to the, I'm going to skip all the pictures because you've already seen those. As you can see here, the house is set about 40 feet back off the property line. So, and given the side setback is really nowhere to put in a garage, for the most part, staff from five feet from the side property line, every seven feet from the front property line. So there's nowhere to actually put a garage except in the front of the house because of where the house sits. And as you can see, this is just given the areas, basically what Mr. Payne already showed and what they're proposing, you know, to go forth. And I'll skip all that. I think what staff is talking about is, we think based on what the applicant is doing, trying to preserve the home, given the fact that the home is already built almost 40 feet back, given the side setbacks of the home, is nowhere to put a garage. In Florida, you know, you need garages, nowhere to put it but in the front of the house. And unfortunately, to do a two-car garage, you can't meet the 25-foot setback and still do a two-car garage. And the applicant is doing a side lone garage, so the actual garage door will be on the side. So what the neighborhood would see will be, almost would not be a garage door, which staff support in that. And as staff complies with the Section 9438D6, that's shown on pages four through seven of the staff report. And again, that's the condition we talked about, that any driveway that's put in must comply with the 75% requirement for the front yard. Let me get out of here because she didn't have a chance to do her. We use Google Earth. So basically, you're looking, basically, you're looking at the home directly. This is, and then basically, we're looking east on Seville. As you can see, the homes surrounding it, mature area, pretty much landscaped. Most of the homes, as you can see, have large setbacks. You have some of the, a lot of ranch-style homes in this area, which had carports built. Some of them had carports, some of them had garages added on over time. This is the homes across the streets. You see, these, most of these homes have over 25-foot setbacks. So anywhere they're going to place anything, will be in the front. So this is basically, you're looking south of the property. We can see another garage there to the front. And this is the home that the applicant talked about because it's on a corner lot, so it's on a 12 and a half feet setback. This is the home directly to the west of, west of 251 Seville. As you can see, it's set back 12 and a half feet because it's a corner side. And the 25 feet is actually on Olive Avenue. Again, back to the home again. And that concludes staff presentations. Be happy to ask any questions you may have.
Do the board members have any questions for the planning staff? Okay. No questions? Are any, are there any persons here who would like to make any comments with regards to this case and this application? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll now move to executive session. And we will just go down the list. Mr. Fields, are there any comments you'd like to make?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Woods?
No comment.
Ms. Barlow?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Hyman?
Thank you.
I would simply say that I'm delighted to see this project come before us, and I think that it's going to be a good addition to the neighborhood. The home is in great, great need of some help, and I think this is going to, going to meet that need. And I appreciate bringing it forward. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Any other comments by anyone on the board? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make it. Mr. Dyche, Chairman, I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals Grant Application Number 3392, a request by James Payne Jr. for a variance from Section 9472.2A of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations to allow an 18-foot setback for an attached garage where 25 feet is required. The motion is based upon testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of facts that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section 9438D6 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed intent of the zoning and land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. This recommendation is made subject to the following conditions. The proposed future driveway shall comply with the 75% landscape requirement for the front yard area.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I so second.
Okay. Then I guess, Ms. White, if you could call the roll for the vote, please?
Christopher Cameron. Malika Barlow. Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess.
All right, then the motion passes. By unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
Okay, the next case is case number 3391. And if Ms. White could please read the case description into the record, please?
A request by Guy Bartels of Yellowfin Builders on behalf of Kevin and Jennifer Johnson for a variance from Section 94-302B2 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations to permit a seven-foot-high wall with a fence on top within the front setback where a maximum six-foot-high wall is permitted in a single-family low-density residential zoning district. The approximately half-acre site is located at 6517 South Flagler Drive within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Okay, the applicant, if you could state your name, please?
My name is Guy Bartels. I own and operate Yellowfin Builders. I'm here to represent Kevin and Jennifer Johnson.
Okay, thank you. So you can make your presentation, please. Thanks.
And I want to clarify that, the house is at 6517 South Flagler Drive, and the retaining wall at the front of the home is four feet high. On top of the wall, there is a privacy fence, I mean, I apologize, a pool safety fence. With the new FEMA regulations that are, right, there's, and there are some good pictures there, I apologize. With the new FEMA regulations, we're lifting these houses so high, the properties are large. They are sitting on the, they're filling up the whole property. This is an actual retaining wall. The retaining wall has dirt all the way up to it, as you could see by the shrubbery and the trees. There's a pool directly behind this wall, and there is a four-foot drop on the wall. By the building code, I am required to have that fence. The fence sits approximately 84 inches high from the sidewalk and is, as I said, a 36-inch fence. When I have a fall of over 30 inches per the building code, I have to have a safety fence. So this fence is approximately 12 or 14 inches higher than the variance, than the zoning board would allow, but it is required by the building department. So I'm kind of in a catch-22. I, we talked about a lot of different scenarios. I actually met Mr. Robert Brown and Angela Von Jones on-site. I asked for courtesy inspections and was met on-site on multiple occasions. I thought in the beginning that it would, that the safety factor would overrule the zoning factor. Here we are today, which I don't have a problem with. I'm looking to finalize this house. The, I'm still sitting on a TCO waiting for the variance. And as you can see, the shrubbery is relatively new there in that pick. The shrubbery has grown through the fence. It is not as, the shrubbery on the bottom is growing up, the shrubbery on the top is growing through. It is not, it's not an unsightly fence. And it was actually all the way passed through the building department, passed through the zoning department, and code enforcement got a complaint, brought it back up. So here we are today.
All right, do you want to add anything more to your comment, or we can go to questions?
No, I'd rather field questions on it because there has to be a few.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions of the applicant?
I'll start. Oh, you want to go? I just want to get clarification. What's before us right now is you're seeking approval of what visually we're seeing.
That's exactly right.
So you're coming before us not for permission, but almost for forgiveness, they say. Sometimes you build.
No, not necess, it's permission because the building department makes me put that fence out. So I put it up for the building department. I've done with everything. Now, when the zoning department has a, has a fence regulation height of six feet. So with the elevation of my building and having a fall factor of over 30 inches, I'm required by the building department to put that fence in place. So I put it in place to get through my building department inspections. I needed it for my pool inspection. I needed it for my building inspections. So I had to have it per the building department.
So at the time, you thought you were complying with what you understood, all the regulations?
And we, we, at that time, I did. And I also still believe to this day that this fence is necessary for safety. It's a, if we take this fence down, it's more than a four-foot fall to the sidewalk with nothing, takes, you know, there's nothing, there's a pool behind there, there's, there's grass, this is where children play. So yeah, it is a safety factor.
And then your understanding was, and then you must have been going through some other approvals, and then you were told this doesn't comply with, well, it complies with the building, then not the zoning. Is that what happened, Tom?
It, it was actually through everything until the code enforcement got a complaint, and it brought it back up. Had they, had the City of West Palm Beach Code Enforcement Office not gotten a phone call, this would have probably been closed out because it was mandatory to have.
And do you recall the origin of the complaint?
I apologize, I can't.
Do you recall the origin of the complaint?
I wasn't privy to that.
Have you learned it since?
I, it was just that the fence was, was higher than the six-feet allowable fence.
Yeah, thank you.
And you could see that it is, it is a 30-inch fence, which is mandatory, on top of a four-foot wall, which is an actual retaining wall. The soil goes directly to the top of the wall.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I love your house. I see it every day. I walk the Flagler Drive.
I have seen you. I recognize you when we walk past each other.
And I have a friend who probably sees me walk with. But, and as I typically do when I get these requests for the, for the variance, I try and visit from, you know, doing my duty, due diligence and whatnot. I measured your fence, if you don't mind. But to the south side, the measurement shows it eight feet as opposed to seven feet. I, I would like to ask staff, I guess, well, I ask staff when it's their time. But I'm assuming you wouldn't have a problem with changing the seven-foot to an eight-foot just to cover any variations?
Vice versa.
I'm sorry?
Vice versa. Same, changing my eight-foot to a seven-foot?
No, changing, changing your, your variance request to an eight-foot.
Oh, I understand. I apologize. I didn't, I didn't realize.
Just in case somebody else comes along, puts a tape measure on it, sees that it's eight-foot, and gives you the same heartburn, you know, that, that we had.
I, I wouldn't mind that. That was, that was.
I don't know if we can entertain Mr. Thomas, an on-the-spot, you know, change to the application when we're being asked to sit here, accept evidence, and then vote, so.
I understood we're, we're able to add conditions on to the approval as a part of our approval.
Oh, I didn't understand you presenting it to the applicant that way.
I'm sorry.
But again, I still think we might leave legal counsel.
It may have been terrible, but, so, so my, my wall, my wall is at four feet high, which is, everything went through the engineering, the zoning, the building. I needed it for the, for the elevation of my house, per the FEMA requirements that are raising these houses to this. My fence is at 36 inches high, per my building code requirements, necessary, have to have it. So if I wrote seven foot somewhere, it was an error on my part, but I'm, I'm not asking for a, whether, the sidewalk also goes down, so I'm required to do it per my lowest part of my sidewalk. So everything, so everything's gone through the building department, everything's gone through the zoning department. So if I wrote seven foot somewhere, that was an error on my part, but I don't remember doing that.
Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator. I'm not quite sure where you're getting eight feet from.
I measured it. I measured it.
Okay, I can't take your measurements, I have to take...
I, I understand, that's why...
But the survey said, the surveys that we, that we've been provided by contractor and the survey we have on site shows, the first 25 feet is eight feet, I mean, seven feet. And then after 25 feet, it does elevate a little, because the pool, or the pool edge, probably, because I can't go, Google Earth's not going to show you it, because it's not built yet, but the pool edge is at, basically, 25 foot is where the water's edge is, that's where the 25 feet is. It does go up after that, but that meets code requirements, so I'm not quite sure. Billing official myself are both out there, did both measure, did some measurements and all, but the survey we got from them says it's seven feet. I'm not quite sure. It says 48 plus 36 on...
Then, then I'll accept your, I'll accept your measurements and move forward.
And as you can see, to the south side of the property, the columns, and they were probably done a long time ago, I'm only approximately a foot higher than the columns on the south side also, and I don't, two wrongs don't make a right. I'm more worried about the safety factor in this instance. My homeowners are worried about the safety factor in this instance. They have four children, they have two dogs, they, this is, their front yard is their play area. This is where the pool is, this is where their barbecue grill is, this is where they're playing at.
I just want to make sure that you're, that you're covered by the staff, and when somebody, if somebody calls and, you know, I'm just concerned about that, and if they're okay with it, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
So, I have a question, just a point of clarification for me. So I see the, the picture here, I understand. What is the height of the, the ground on the other side of the, the fence, where the trees are?
It, it's, it's literally two to seven inches below the wall.
Okay, that's, that's what I assumed.
So, and so if you look where the truck is, that's actually my vehicle, if you look where the truck is, that is approximately an inch, and then to the other side, it goes to about six inches is where I have my drain pipe.
Okay, so, if you were to comply with the existing, if there wasn't a, a variance given, what would be, the, the height of this fence would have to come down, how far? One foot?
Approximately 14 inches.
14 inches, okay.
But then I don't, then I fail my building. I don't go through building, it's a catch-22.
Understood, that's, that's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, I, I, and I didn't mean to correct you.
No, 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 not at all, not at all, that's just what I'm trying to understand. So that's, that's the dilemma you face.
But the building requirement is pool safety, correct?
Yes.
And you can remedy that by, I thought you can put, you know, the smaller fence around the pool. It doesn't have to be around their backyard. I mean, they bought...
You know, we also have that. We have a baby fence around the pool also.
So wouldn't that comply with the building code? Why, why doesn't it?
No, this is a fall factor safety fence. This is not, anytime that I have a wall or a step over 30 inches, anywhere in the state of Florida, this is a, this is a state of Florida building code, I have to have it fenced that is at least 30 inch, 36 inches high, with no wider than a four-inch width in the fencing. It's, this isn't, this is pool safety from somebody coming in, yes, but it's, it's fall factor from going out.
For the resident.
So if a little kid runs out here and jumps off this wall to catch a football, playing with his friends, it's too high for the building department.
So generally, what happened was, unfortunately, I don't know what came first, but the building code, you got ahead of that, and really, this is a property that should have never had a pool in its front yard, because, because you can't comply with both. And so what we're setting ourselves up, and I'll ask staff to comment on this, is that builders and homeowners go in, they pick and choose what codes they want to comply with, when there could be this potential conflict down the road, and then we're asked, after the fact, not for permission, whether it's the city or a zoning board like us, made up of community members, for forgiveness and not for permission, because everything's being done after the fact. That it sounds like you can't, I'm assuming you had to build the front yard up in order to have a pool, because I'm assuming it's not a lap pool that's three feet, but, so again, it's kind of the reverse order, and now you're coming before us, asking us for, again, forgiveness and not permission, and where does that set us up in a whole city, where everyone has their own idea of what they want in their front yards and what codes they're going to comply with or not?
Angela Van Panen is on administrative. Let me address that quickly. As she stated, Robert Brown, the billing official, myself, actually went to the site. This basically was permitted, per se, based on two factors. He needed a wall to retain, because they built a lot up for FEMA regulations, and he needed a fence for the pool safety, for also to meet billing code. However, like she stated, it, when somebody complained to code enforcement, we looked at it again, and after we looked at it again, determination was made, it was a foot higher than what the code requirements was. So the applicant was trying to comply with zoning, trying to comply with building. So what we said was, and staff is actually in the process of doing administrative variances for situations like this, so it wouldn't have to come to the ZBA, because, based on the circumstances, and we have a lot of this now going on in the city because of the fact that the FEMA regulations require them to build their lots up, and everybody's doing their entire lots, so we've had a lot of issues, because there will be measures from the outside. Staff measures from the outside of the wall at the property line. So wherever we measure is going to be higher, we don't measure from the inside. So anybody put up a fence, we're going to measure from the outside, it's always going to be higher for the neighboring property. So that's how it came to be. He, he, they did what they were supposed to do, based on the billing official, the billing inspections and everything, and once the code, uh, some, the neighbor, I think it was a neighbor or someone down the street complained, that's when we looked at it more, and then Robert and myself made a determination that it met billing code, but it violated the zoning code. So the only remedy we have right now, I don't have an administrative process. I will in about, probably about four or five months. So we have to bring him here to rectify that issue. So that's why, that's kind of how we got here. So he, they did follow, they were kind of on two different paths, based on what the billing inspector was telling him out there. They did submit a billing permit for it, so it just kind of got, a lot of it got lost in the, uh, what they were doing. But again, we're just here to rectify the one-foot requirement.
So the question is, it sounds like to me, to make it as simple as I can for me, is that the FEMA requirements require you to build the house at an elevation, that elevation is higher than what's outside this fence. So you have the, the fence, what we're asked to apply is the outside of the fence. Your, your building code is requiring you to comply the inside of the fence, where your, the ground level is higher. Is that what's causing this?
You're right, so this is something that the, not, and it's not just the city of West Palm, and so I'm a, I'm a state-licensed GC, I literally built from Martin County down to Broward. We, the whole state of Florida, as the water's rising, and with, as, as we are having hurricanes, the FEMA regulations have gotten at least 24 inches higher, even in, you know, little municipalities like Palm Beach Shores, everything's raising. Retaining walls are a thing of the future. You guys are going to, I'm the, I may be the first one you guys see, but until they change that requirement and that code, I won't be the last. So in the conflict, I don't think, it's, it's easy to say, oh, you should have caught it in the building department, or you should have caught it in, in the zoning department. You, you know, when you're looking at it on black and white, and we're going through these things, I didn't catch it, I never noticed it until I got the call from Richard Gathright and said, hey, your fence is too high, and then I asked for an inspector to come out. I'm like, you know, what do you want me to do? You guys made me do this. So maybe a little foresight, you know, we could have done it, but you guys are positively going to see this again in the next few months, and, and until the building department, the zoning department, make a new code, adapt to a code, and make sure that, hey, if we have a retaining wall and we have a pool in the front yard, then, you know, if you have a retaining wall, the fence is a requirement, doesn't matter if the pool's there. If, if you have a retaining wall and this, the, the property's at, this one's only at nine feet, but for those of you who have been on Flagler and seen it flood, it's, it's coming.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So my sense is that what's causing this is that you're having to build the house at an increased elevation because of FEMA regulations to comply.
Yes.
Okay. That requires the fence site from the interior of the property that you're referring to.
The, the wall is an actual retaining wall that does hold dirt.
Okay.
Fill.
So, I don't see that you could have complied with these because, with, with the zoning requirements, because of the FEMA requirements of you building the, the house on an elevation.
You, you were, you were correct. It's, this, like I say, this is the first one you guys are seeing, but it won't be the last one.
Because I don't see how you could comply. If the FEMA requirements are requiring you to build the height at an elevation, then you have to build a fence to meet that elevation, right? But then the exterior elevation that we're looking at from the roadside is lower. Unless I'm getting something completely wrong, that just seems to me what I see.
You know what, to put it, you know, to not, no technical term, no contractor term, it's just a simple conflict of one code from another. The building code just, and the zoning codes just don't really, in this instance, don't match. It's not, and it's really not, there's no way to make it match because of the way that it is, so the next, so the next 10 houses that come up on Flagler or close to Flagler in between Olive, Washington, those, those, all those houses are going to be built at an elevation of, like this. Whether they have a, they're either going to have a very steep slope, which we're not allowed to have more than a four to one, or they're going to have a retaining wall. Once you go over the 30 inches on a retaining wall, the fence is mandatory per the building code.
So, if I might, the, the pool's not the issue, with all due respect. It would have had, it, it just happens to be there, and if you could see the rest of the site, you'd really notice how it does slope up to get to the parking court and to, and to the entrance to the house. So it's, it's all there, regardless of the pool being there. So, yeah, I, I don't like pools in the front, front yard either, but, because they cause other problems, but in this instance, they're, they're sort of, you know, it doesn't matter.
It, it wouldn't, right, whether the pool's in the front yard or not, it wouldn't have mattered. It's, you're going to, it's going to happen with any, with any retaining wall that's over 30 inches. If it, if in, if in fact that retaining wall is at three foot, and you have a three-foot fence, you're, you're in the code. My retaining wall happened to be at four foot, mandatory for the building.
And the problem is, it varies along Flagler Drive, because the road goes up and down from a drainage standpoint, okay? So those that are at a high, where Flagler's higher, you'll need less of a retaining wall, but there's a house being built on Elway right now, that's got a retaining wall first that went in, and that whole lot, they tore down the house, they're tearing down houses all along Flagler Drive. And it's, and, and living there, you know, our, our floor elevation's at four and a half above the sidewalk, and, and we've had water up to our wall, to our, to our house, and it's, you know, it's, so what Guy's saying is, is absolutely true, and, you know, I was only hung up on a, on a mere technicality on the, on the height, but it's a real, it's a real issue, for sure.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the, one of the conditions, and I fully agree that there, this discrepancy is, is driven by the fact that the building needs to be raised, it's more resilient, you're trying to address safety, and so everything within the property boundary is being done to, to accommodate that, those issues, and short of raising the road to meet the six-foot height requirement, I think you're doing everything you, you can within your property. So my, my question is about the condition, and what, the first part of the condition requires a, the picket fence condition in perpetuity, and I wanted to see, you know, it seems like somewhat of an unnecessary burden, especially if we're talking about long-term retaining wall solutions for storm surge and, and raising sea level and, and things like that. Are you in agreeing at this point with the, the staff's condition for a picket fence, and, and why, why would you be accepting that condition?
I don't know, explain to me, instead of an alumina, instead of an aluminum...
The existing, the existing, what you have now is a picket, a metal picket above a concrete base, and it's a condition of approval that that stays a picket situation in perpetuity.
Oh, no, no, it, it would positively stay. We, we don't have any intention of removing it.
I'm asking the, the question that says if, if this homeowner or a future homeowner decides that they want to protect themselves even further, and doesn't want to do a picket, wants to create another material, are we creating an unnecessary burden by accepting a condition that has to stay a picket?
I, I, I don't, personally, I don't think so, nor do I think that anybody would want any, I think, I think the fence is, not only is it functional, it's, it's decorative. It doesn't show like it sits there. That's an old picture, when the landscaping was just in. The, the cluses have grown through the fence, you have to look for it. We, we did, we put a white fence up because of the wall and the facade. If, in fact, they ever sell the property, I couldn't vouch for somebody that, what they would want to do for a fence, but I can tell you that these homeowners are not going to do anything different than what they have.
So you would accept staff's recommendation for a condition on the property, then?
I, I would, I'll accept anything to, to, at this point, yeah. I'm sitting on six months with a TCO. I just, I was in here two weeks ago for a TCO extension because of this fence.
Thank you.
And what will that require in timeframe?
It sounds like your testimony is that your clients would accept it, so thank you very much.
Oh, I'll testify to anything, yeah.
Absolutely. I think it was just a hypothetical that our colleague was raising.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Just on the fence, fence issue and the type of it, I think it's more of a protection going forward, that we're not going to be faced with someone coming along and want to put a, a chain link fence, okay, something less than what you have, you know, so, I think it's a good, I think it's a good condition, and I think it ought to be part of the, the approval.
Yeah, and, and I think it's something that you guys can, can use in the future, that the fence has to, I consider that to be a decorative fence, personally. I guess it could be more ornate, but I don't know why it would be, it's safety.
Okay, I guess we'll go into the, the staff report. Thank you.
Angela Van Panen is on administrative. I think we've had enough discussion on the fence and the location of everything.
Angela, are you calling the question? Is that right?
Again, I'm just going to, okay, we already talked about that. I'm just going to go to conditions of approval. The staff recommends approval, it complies with section 9438D6, which is on pages four and seven in the staff report, and as we talked about, the fence should always be made in a picket fence, and again, it's just for aesthetic reasons. You don't want to see somebody come in, either wall it off, per se, or put up a, a chain link fence, unless you're on Flagler Drive. And then we also, the wall is already set back and will remain the current location with the landscaping in front. I didn't do, she, because again, she didn't get a chance to go out and do a video. Google Earth's not going to show you the home, because it's not constructed, so it's nothing to show for that, but I would ask any questions, happy to ask any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, then we can, is there anybody here, a member of the public, who would like to make a comment with regards to this application? Okay, there are none, so we'll go into executive session.
I'll just start, Sharon. I appreciate my colleagues' patience in letting me understand better from your testimony exactly what was before us, so that did help change my mind, along with the testimony of staff, in that I am prepared to vote in approval, but I would ask my colleagues to entertain that we do consider the two conditions that you said your clients would agree that's recommended by staff, because again, we, at least I personally, rely on staff's recommendation, their skills and expertise, so I would ask that my colleagues consider voting to accept this variance with the two conditions that staff had recommended that we vote on.
Any other member of the board want to make a comment? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move that the zoning board of appeals grant application number 3391, a request by the city boards of, I'm sorry, thank you. A request by Guy Bartels of Yellowfin Builders on behalf of Kevin and Jennifer Johnson for a variance from section 94-302B1 of the city zoning and land development regulations to allow a seven-foot fence height along the front setback of a residential property adjacent to a major roadway where, where six feet is permitted. The motion is based upon testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in article two, section 94-38D6... in Article II, Section 94-38d6 of the City of West Palm Beach's Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. Yeah, we don't, we don't have.
Can we read the conditions into the? We have the conditions.
The conditions.
Just add to the motion, the fence shall always be a picket fence, and the wall shall always remain in its current location with landscaping in front.
And I add to the motion that the, the fence shall remain and always be a picket fence. And the other, the other part of that was what? I'm sorry?
The wall shall always remain in its current location with landscaping in front.
And, and the wall shall always remain in its current location with the landscaping in front.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, Ms. White, could you call the roll for the vote?
Christopher Cameron.
Uh, yes, approved.
Alaka Barlow.
Approved.
And your reason? Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Thank you for the help.
Thank you. All right, the next case is case number 3390. And if Ms. Wright, could you please read the case description, please?
A request by Ryan Abrams Esquire on behalf of New Hampshire Holdings LLC for a Class B special use permit to allow for group home type three in the Broadway Mixed Use Development District Correction, building type one zoning district. The approximately .55 acre site is located at the southwest corner of Broadway and 27th Street at 2708 Broadway Avenue within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Schoeff.
Okay, applicant?
Hi, good afternoon, members of the ZBA, staff, members of the public. My name is Jeffrey Lynn, myself along with James K. Green. We are co-counsel for our client, the owner of 2700 Broadway, who is under contract to purchase the adjacent 2708 Broadway and to expand the current residential treatment use. That use is a allowable use in the zoning district as a Class B special use application. So we're before you today on that. Before we go on, I want to just quickly go over what our presentation's going to be about. We're going to overview the subject and the surrounding property. We're then going to, if you have any questions to understand the use better that is existing there today and as it's to be expanded, we're going to quickly go through the standards from the Class B special use application and how the application meets those standards. Going to go through some proposed site plans and elevations, and then let you know what we've been doing with the community to date. I want to let you know that we did have a very productive meeting this morning with the Old Northwood Homeowners Association. They saw all the plans in the presentation, and they were very pleased, and they have no objection. I asked if I could say this, they have no objection to this application moving forward. So without further ado, just to be very clear, what we're asking for is a currently a 15-bed residential treatment use, which is identified in the zoning code as a group home type three. To expand that use by, it's currently 15 beds. To expand that use by 16 beds to get 31 beds, we have to seek the Class B special use application. To be more specific, this is a proposed site plan. The property to the right or the south is 2700, immediately adjacent to it on the block with the surrounding, with the remaining properties, 2708. That property currently has 15 beds contained within seven bedrooms. It was redeveloped in the interior in 2016 and approved for use. 2708 is immediately next door. It's currently a one-story, 10-unit multifamily apartment building. So adding those 16 beds and unitizing the parcels, we would have 31 total beds. I'm here today also with my client, Raheem Bell. He's over there. He's the property owner and the operator of 2700. We also have sitting in front Kathy Claude. She's a national expert and consultant relating to residential treatment facility, siting and operations. And in the back, Carl Peterson, our traffic engineer. If you have any questions during the hearing today, please feel free to ask them as well. When we first sat down with our client and the neighborhood, we also spoke with the CRA. I believe Allison's here from the CRA, sitting in the back. If you have any questions, this is in the CRA area. So we wanted to meet with the CRA. We spoke with CRA Director Rug about what the CRA's goals and intentions were. We were aware of the redevelopment of the streetscape project there to do a road diet. And the consensus was that, one, the goals were, were met, where we want to contribute to the safety of the corridor. That was the consensus from the neighborhood, is that they're just concerned overall about people loitering and walking around. And while the Old Northwood neighborhood to the east has been secured to some degree with road closures and whatnot, they continue to be concerned about the ability for Broadway to redevelop with its current safety and security issues. So we took that in consideration, and we certainly want the same thing, because the clients, the residents would be staying at the property for approximately 30 days. They too are entitled to their confidentiality, their privacy, their security. So it's a win-win in that, in that respect. Two, and equally important, we want to design and implement a site plan that had curb appeal. And we'll go over elements of this property. It's just really unfortunately that we've seen the corridors left with vacant properties and dormant properties. And in this instance, we've come to learn a nuisance property at 2708. And last, we want to be able to provide economically sustainable facility that contributes to the financial stability of all of Broadway. To have something that's a one-hit wonder or overnight success isn't going to be sustainable for the amount of money that you'll see that my client wants to put into this property, for it to be economically sustainable, and for the neighborhood to be financially stable, the improvements that we are recommending are almost required. So really quick, the Broadway corridor, you may be familiar with it. This is actually an aerial from Google Earth of the subject property that U-shaped building is the apartment at 2708. You can see how it's immediately adjacent to 2700 and my client's existing use. Again, we'll leave plenty of visual pictures to go through. But for those who are not regularly aware, Broadway is approximately a one-mile stretch of land that starts at 25th Street and goes up to 45th. Our clients, the subject properties are down here in the south at the beginning of Broadway coming out of the city. Quickly, as a tour of the arrow shows you our client's current building in the back, and you can see it stands out. It's a two-story Mediterranean Spanish historical-looking structure that you can see immediately as you enter the Northwood area. And as you get closer, you can see there's the Seegate Hotel, hourly hotel. There's other properties around there that are in equal deteriorating condition, but not our client's property. When they bought, when Mr. Bell bought it in 2015 and renovated on the inside, he did a really nice job with the landscaping. It is the nicest property, certainly on the block. And that's as you get closer to it. It's right there on the edge of 26th Street, and to the, immediately north of it, that light blue in the background is 2708. So the existing structure is beautiful. It's compatible with the neighborhood, and it is the nicest structure on the block. This contrasts strongly, however, with the adjacent 2708, where, you know, this aerial view is what the ground looks like today. You have this facade, this paint, by the way, is new. All these improvements are new or generated as a requirement of code enforcement, and they were recent. It wasn't like the code enforcement violation went out and the property owner fixed it overnight. It took a lot of prodding and leans and whatnot. But still, you can see that this is just an unacceptable condition. This is completely unacceptable for any neighborhood, Broadway or uptown, doesn't matter. The view, the top picture from the top left, that's the site, the, the view from 27th Street, it's just an open, inviting nuisance. And it has been. It's allowed for illegal dumping. And we'll get closer to the picture. You see the alleyway that's in the back. But for the house that's immediately behind it, the gentleman who purchased that home in December of last year, but for the fact that he lives on an island unto itself, a beautiful island, he'd be looking at a barbed wire chain link fence with temporary screening and grounds that that just don't look well. And that, to us, is a completely unacceptable feature of the property. That needs to be fixed. This entire property needs to be fixed. And we're, with the expansion of the use, I want to show you what my client's anticipating doing there. So again, this is the view. If you're looking north to the southeast, that's the current 2708. You can see 2700, completely different, much nicer oasis in the background. Again, the view, again, from 27th. And you can even see how the city's allowed the sidewalk area to just be completely in disrepair. And, you know, we know both from crime statistics as well as just good planning, that when it looks like no one's paying attention, then that invites a bad element. When there's eyes on the street and there's eyes on your property and your house looks nice, it communicates to others that there's people here who care about this property, and this isn't the kind of property to be trespassed upon, and this neighborhood isn't meant to be the kind of place where you can wander. It has eyes on the street with people who care. And this is the alleyway in the back facing south. And you can see, I don't know why, when they put up a chain link fence recently, they put up arms for barbed wire. I can guess why they did that, but it just, again, completely inappropriate to be facing a residential neighborhood. And we want to change that. Good, another view. So the proposal is to take 2700, which is existing, an existing 15-bed residential treatment and detoxification facility, been very quietly run. In fact, we spoke to the neighbors today. They thought it was a house. They weren't even aware of what was happening on the inside, which is short-term residential treatment. So they were pleased that it's well-run. To combine that with 2708, so we can now secure and control the entire block. And by controlling the entire block, it now gives my client, Mr. Bell, the opportunity to really put the money into this property that it requires, as opposed to, you see, his own property is beautiful, but he can't control until now the adjacent property. And you have, while that alleyway buffer that's in the back, it's still, those neighbors, even though they may not be in the back, don't deserve to be staring at what they're looking at today. It needs to be improved, and Mr. Bell is committed to making those improvements as we move forward. So this is the proposal of the elevations, taking the combined property. You can see that we took the existing decorative fence, and we extended it to be a privacy wall heading towards the north with, we're going to add the proposal, and we want to meet with the CRA Advisory Board more. We want to meet with the neighbors more, because they have a lot of ideas. Again, they saw these images today, and they were very excited. And they agreed with the concept, which is that specifically with the city engineering coming into reducing the lane width of Broadway, it's to bring people onto the street. And by having people on the street, we want to have more of a sense of place with more lighting, more landscaping. Certainly to the extent we can, we added green walls and other landscaping. We'll show you in a second that we survive and won't use that much irrigation. This is the view facing directly to the east, from the west across the street, putting up, again, that privacy wall for the residents who are going to be there, and at the same time creating, bringing more landscaping to the street. As we'll see in a second, there's actually space in there between the wall and the street for some shade trees and other plantings. This is a view, again, looking down from the north, facing a little bit to the south. And then this is that corner, which is right at 27th Street, which, which right now is just open land. We want to extensively put landscaping around that, put the wall around it with security cameras that are going to be very concealed, so they don't stand out. More street lighting around the corner, so you have more eyes on the street, more lighting. It's very dark there at night, and so the area doesn't need to be lit up with bright LEDs, but it does need to be illuminated so that people are aware that this site is under attention. So the aerial, again, from Broadway, you can see where the parking's in the front and how it's currently situated as a, as a short-term rental use. The proposed colored site plan brings the parking to the front, adds much more landscaping and irrigation, puts a gazebo possibly out there, maybe a water feature, something serene. Again, the environment's supposed to be serene and relaxing and comforting while people are moving through their recovery. And they'll be living in that apartment building no differently than people who are living there now. You can see towards the edge, if we go to the, the right corner edge down over here, there's a current curb cut. We're not really sure if that's city-owned property or not. We've spoken with the CRA and the city about how we can get in there and improve that with landscaping. We have to find out who owns that. And similarly, on the other corner, while the property is owned on the corner, we wanted to match it with a similar style so that the landscaping is outside of the wall, not inside the wall entirely, so that you have people that are coming down that way or, or visited, not just with the wall, but with a nice landscape feature. There will be a wall or security feature surrounding the entire property, including the back, that will match. We want to work closely with the police department on that, because I'm sure they'll have a lot to say about what kind of improvements they'd like to see, as well as the neighbors'. We discussed the wall, and the only concern that we, actually, we brought up was we didn't want to bring an attractive nuisance of having a place for people who can do graffiti. So, you know, cameras are alone, but we're, we're definitely committed to security features and lighting. You'll see some lighting around the back. But again, we want to work with the neighbors and step-ted design elements to make sure that it's, everything's done right. Before I continue, there are some questions. Kathy's here regarding residential treatment programs. I don't know if you want us to get into those details right now or wait till you have questions. I can tell you, with Kathy being here, again, I don't want to take too much of your time. So I was going to have Kathy come up for a second and just briefly describe the activities that are happening at, at the site, unless you have questions that want to wait on that.
No, you can, she can testify as part of your application.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Claude, please come up.
My name is Kathy Claude. I'm a behavioral health consultant. I used to run the Department of Children and Families Substance Abuse and Mental Health Program Office in Palm Beach County for about 16 years. I have open treatment centers throughout the nation, primarily detox and residential. I say those together because it is very common that you operate a detox program and a residential program together. The continuity of care has been proven to be very effective in our outcomes. When you look at a residential treatment center, right now they have a detox, where they employ nurses, doctors, behavioral health techs. What they will do, they, they propose to add a residential treatment program, which will add additional behavioral health staff and additional therapists. It is a secure environment in the fact that the doors have alarms, there's lights, there's cameras, and there's face-to-face contact throughout the day. We are not allowed to lock our doors. It is not a jail. The population that this program intends to serve are not involuntary. They voluntarily seek treatment. They want to get better. They're the sons and daughters of lawyers, doctors, nurses. It's not a population that you would see through CARP or the Drug Abuse Foundation. We're not asking to put that type of facility in this property. Are there any questions?
Also, Jeffrey Lynn, for the record, I handed out a copy of her resume and her CV, so you can understand her background, that she's well-versed in the space. Kathy, can you explain for the board, how is it, though, that people identify to come here? Can just anyone walk up and say, hey, I want drug alcohol treatment, and walk through the front door? Can you explain how that all takes place?
Absolutely not. There's an admission process that has to go through, and it's all based on the American Society of Addiction Medicine. It is required that they do a pre-admission in person or on the phone. They take vital information such as criminal arrest, use, how many times they've been in treatment, age, physical condition. They're all screened by a nurse and a physician.
And Kathy, to that point, so someone would have to be deemed appropriate for care to be admitted?
Absolutely. A licensed clinician must testify in writing or verify in writing that this individual has been screened and meets the criteria for admission to the program and is self, is capable of self-preservation, not a danger to themselves or others.
That was my next question. So if someone is a danger to themselves or others, that person then, in your, your opinion, wouldn't be qualified or acceptable to be admitted to the program?
They would be referred to a secure unit, like a Baker Act unit.
So then what happens, Kathy, if someone, they go, they go to the program, they're in a short-term detoxification, then they go to residential treatment? What's the difference between detoxification and residential treatment?
They're no longer medically monitored. That happens in a detox program. They would only go back to see the doctor if they had a complaint or their vitals were unstable. So it's mainly steps down into a clinical level of care.
And what, as, for example, what's a daily routine of a resident who's staying in a residential treatment program such as this?
Probably get up around seven, have their medications, eat breakfast, go into morning meditation, go into a didactic lecture, have lunch, have a two-hour group process, go into recreation, have dinner, meds, and then have an onsite self-help meeting.
Kathy, you've seen the, the other plans, the site plans, the elevations that are proposed, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And based upon your experience, I'm going to ask you first, have you seen residential treatment programs across the country?
Oh, absolutely. And I've started many of them.
You've started some yourself. How would you describe what is being proposed to the board today with, in the genre of residential?
Oh, I think it's very nice. I think it's very nice, and I think it'll serve the purpose. I think it'll be a safe, secure environment if it's allowed.
Now, what happens if someone does want to leave? What, can they just walk out the front door?
No, no. In fact, two years ago, a law was passed in the state of Florida that if you run an alcohol detox in a residential program, you must do what's called a hands-to-hands transfer. If someone's getting ready to discharge, you have to have a 10-day prior, you have to have a discharge staffing with the significant other. You have to arrange for their transfer, and you have to hand-to-hand, you have to take them. No one will be allowed to walk off the property.
Kathy, you've been to this specific, 2700 locations, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And you interviewed the staff?
I did.
And, and the management?
Yep.
In your experience, based upon how they're managing it, is this going to be a, I, I, I want your opinion, is, from what you've seen in the layout, is this a good? is this a good layout, a site plan layout for residential treatment?
Absolutely. It appeared to be very tight, the structure was very tight. Everyone knew I was there, I couldn't get in the door, I had to buzz a few times, had to sign in, had to do all my security checks, absolutely.
And to that point then, you know, there's, one could argue that the neighborhood itself may not be amenable to drug and alcohol treatment because of other, maybe drug crimes or other issues around the neighborhood. What's been your experience with that?
Well, I'd rather live next door to a drug rehab than live in that neighborhood, not next to the drug rehab.
But thank you for now. If you have any questions of Ms. Claude now or later? I just want whatever suits the chair.
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself?
I say, I can.
Are there any questions?
I can get to my presentation or if you want to ask her questions now, it's up to you.
Well, if any of the board members have questions, may as well ask her now.
I've got, on a typical individual in the program, what's the, what's the length of stay normally?
Right now in a detox, depending on what type of detox it is, it's five to 15 days. 15 days be the outside for a chronic alcoholic. When you're looking at a residential treatment program, the combined stay would be about 45 days. So most of your clients aren't going to be leaving. You'll have less turnover, you'll have more steady client population.
And we've all heard the horribles of some of these programs in some of the communities in Palm Beach County. And if you can explain what those, why they've become famous, if you will, and how this would be different and what our expectation might be?
You're talking about the Sober Home Drug Task Force?
Yeah, down in Delray Beach is one area I'm familiar with.
What they got into patient brokering was a big issue in South Florida. And patient brokering is defined by different people, different ways. But anytime you give a client to convince them to come into your treatment program so you can build their insurance, that's client brokering. Anything that you give the client in that sense. We saw instances of like two-fers, two-for-one. If you have a girlfriend that's got an insurance policy, we'll take you two, that's client brokering. We'll pay for your cigarettes while you're here, that's client brokering. We'll give you $500 to come to treatment, that's client brokering. And all of those things have occurred. This gentleman does not do that. He does not engage in any type of practice such as that. He's on recorded, his lines are recorded. A lot of times during your call centers, you'll have reps that will promise the moon to get them in. And it's important to take those taped calls and be able to read them back for quality assurance. They have that in place. I saw no evidence of client brokering, I spoke with the clients, I talked to the staff. I know his reputation.
One last question, if I might. You mentioned recreation as part of the day in the space. How, what would that look like?
It could be board games as well as pictionary and things like that. A lot of addicts don't, don't usually engage in recreational activities, so it's a, it's a part of reconditioning, in a sense, to get them to enjoy things, card games, backgammon. Sometimes they go out and they play bocce ball, things like that. Sometimes even a basketball court.
But it's not focused on a physical activity, recreation?
No, not unless they're medically cleared by the physician.
It's just mental and, and?
It can be painting, a lot of times there's painting, yoga. I know that this agency actually uses yoga and meditation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do you want to continue your presentation then?
Thank you, Kathy, very much. So moving on, I want to quickly, again, Jeffrey Lynn for the record, just quickly go through the standards. We've reviewed the staff report and staff has concluded that we've met all the standards that are required for you to be able to approve a Class B special use permit. I want us to review those in a little bit more detail as well. Again, there's three groupings of standards that have to be proven today. There's the general use standards, the specific use standards, and then there's additional standards for all uses that are defined as group homes. The first of these general use standards, and they're basically really about how the use is going to function with future uses that could come to the area, how it functions in harmony with the surrounding uses, and whether there's a public benefit. The definitions of the use will not result in substantially less public benefit nor greater harm than would result from use of the site for some use permitted by right or by some other special use permitted on the site. Candidly, I'm not entirely sure what that means, except that I just take it that you can't have a deleterious effect upon the neighborhood. So for future uses, future uses, the zoning is Broadway mixed use, so it's mixed use kind of uses, residential, commercial. If you look to the current zoning code though, the uses are defined by the zoning code in the office commercial district. So you'd look in the office commercial district for current permitted uses. And those include multifamily residential. The uses you saw will continue to appear and actually function as a residential dwelling. It will be no change to the neighborhood for how it functions. If anything, we're going to be reducing some impacts related to its current operations. So it's compatible with the surrounding uses now and as proposed. The surrounding uses today, the orange boxes are current multifamily properties, but you can see immediately to the south, we identified that Sea Grape Hotel along with the commercial along 25th Street. And on the other side of the street, there's some vacant parcels, some of which are owned by the CRA. And there are some places of worship, more than, there's three in the surrounding area. So this is what the surrounding area of this, from 26th Street to 27th Street, looks like. So the use at the proposed location cannot or should not result in a substantially less public benefit nor greater harm than result from the site being used if it was a permitted use. So we look at the public benefits that the combined site and the redeveloped site and the expanded use would bring. One, we know it'll increase the tax base, which is a greater public benefit. Two, we know we're going to reduce trips. We'll talk about traffic in just a second. We're reducing by 31 daily trips to the site because you're removing a multifamily apartment building where there's coming and going of people and it's going to be all within a single small campus. The site improvements that we'll go over again, it's a greater public benefit because it creates curb appeal for the entire neighborhood, not just the property. We're eliminating a known criminal element at 2708 that reduces significantly public harm and requirement for police and fire calls, which we have copies of. Definitely would support higher grades jobs. I didn't have Ms. Claude testify to this, but your average person working at a facility has a college degree and has licensure and certification. So these people that are working there are not minimum wage people. These are people that, that command six figures, I mean, five figures, high five-figure salaries and therefore they're committed to where they work as well. In that regard, the client likes to hire qualified local employees, the people that live in the greater area. There will definitely be locational security for the neighborhood that reduces public harm and that was, the homeowners association was very happy about that. They want to make sure that there'd be eyes on the street on all four corners and there will be. There was also a comment that possibly we could link into the police department surveillance cameras and we said, absolutely, whatever the police department wants would be great. And the program is quiet and non-intrusive, it's a good neighbor. They've been there since 2016 and we were pleased to hear from the neighbors today. They had no idea what was there, no idea. I asked Mr. Bell, I said, you know, before we started, like, what are the neighbors going to say? Like, nothing, they don't know we're there, it's very quiet. And so we're really pleased. That, that speaks loudly about the operations over the past five years and why Mr. Bell wants to further invest in this block and in this neighborhood. So we believe, at least for the general use standards, that we've met the future uses, the surrounding uses and the public benefit. So we believe and ask that there's a positive finding can be made that the general use standards of the Class B special use permit request can be found and met. The specific use standards really focus on three things, traffic utilities and public safety. For traffic, it's a level of service question. They want to make sure you're just not overburdening the roads, that road improvements aren't required and that you have sufficient ingress and egress from the property. It's an existing use. And if anything, we are going to be, from our, Mr. Peterson, who's here in the back, he did a traffic study, he visited the site. And we talked with the, with Mr. Bell and operationally, because no resident or client's allowed to have a vehicle and there are no guests or visitors are allowed, only employees are allowed. Those are the only people generating the trips. It's currently about 23 employees total for 2700, but they work on staggered work schedules. So you don't have more than 10, 11, or 12 at any given time because it's a 24-hour operation. And so the expansion to the, adding these 16 more employees will only require about two additional employees, maybe three. So overall, based upon that trip generation analysis that Mr. Peterson did, they believe that the trips generated will be minimal and actually less than existing today. And the traffic statement, I believe, is part of the backup, but he identifies a reduction of 31 daily trips, including reductions at AM peak hour and PM peak hour. The utility systems just want to make sure it's not being overburdened. Again, the people that are living, will be living in the building. It's going to be, continue to be used as a residential dwelling. So you're not going to have more water usage. The only more water usage you may have is that finally someone's going to install some necessary irrigation in this area. So there's no requirement for utility lines or additional demand. Again, it's a level of service standard that we're fine with. And last, public safety. The proposed use will not place a demand on municipal police or fire protection services beyond, beyond the capacity for those services. If anything, we believe demand on police, fire and other services will decrease. And the reason we say that is we've been looking at the properties and over a five-year period, there have been 116 different incidents at 2708, robbery, armed robbery, child abuse, drugs, a dead person, shooting, just all different kinds of issues going on there that you get with a highly transient, short-term rental. So that will all be eliminated. That's gone because those, that use will no longer exist as it is. It'll be wrapped into the program. So we believe under the specific use standards, we think we've met these three standards as well and therefore we suggest, we think that also for the Class B special use permit request, we've met the specific use standards under Section 94-3064. Last, there's additional standards for group homes. They're, not all apply. Separation requirement, we comply. One of the sections, if you're a non-residential, it needs to be maintained in the general character of the area, we meet that. They want the dwelling occupancies to meet life safety code. They're going to be redeveloped and the insides are clearly with a CO, that'll be met. And with parking, eight parking spaces are required. 10 will be provided on-site, plus the three that exist. So there'll be a total of 13 spaces. Plus the BMUD zoning allows for on-street parking if it was ever necessary, but it won't be. We also have to look at the comprehensive plan and there's three objectives and, well, two objectives and one policy that we thought really stood out. One was to promote the expansion of existing and new businesses, redevelopment and revitalization of activities and annexations. Clearly, Mr. Bell's use of the purposes at 2700, he wants to expand it and to redevelop and revitalize the adjacent property. So we believe we've met that objective, we support it, it supports us. Objective 2.3 deals with SEPTED, getting the police department in there, working with the neighborhood to secure the entirety of the site, which will bring up the visibility and we think the property value for everyone and get more people on the street. And for policy 3.1.7, again, these are all from the future land use, encourage effective adaptive reuse of older buildings. This building, I think it was built in the 50s. With green architecture and contextual infill housing, certainly to the extent that green architecture can be deployed with the landscaping and others, that will absolutely be met. And what is not required as a finding, but we've, we've identified anyways, the city adopted its strategic plan December of 2018 for the years 2019 to 2023. And pillar four of that deals with economy of jobs and we feel we can check off every one of these boxes. One, that the expansion promotes and supports job creation, yes. Two, creates a quality of life that attracts and retains companies, yes. Three, encourages redevelopment and modernization of commercial industrial properties, yes. D, promotes an economic development plan with emphasis on business expansion, diversity and retention, yes. Five, actively addresses national business trends, absolutely yes. I cannot begin to tell you, Ms. Claude can tell you, that the demand for drug and alcohol treatment, good drug and alcohol treatment, quality drug and alcohol treatment, remains at an all-time high and there simply are not enough good providers out there. And COVID's only made it worse. And six, develop, attract and retain good talent in the city. And there's excellent talent, as Ms. Claude testified to, at this location. So we believe we meet this section of the city's strategic plan and therefore we also believe that the additional standards for group homes have been met. And therefore, consistent with the staff report, we believe that you have the ability with competent substantial evidence to find that the Class B special use permit request has met the standards. I want to quickly go through, again, the site plan and landscape so you can understand better, go back to where we were at the beginning. Again, this is an aerial of the existing property. And what we want to do, we want to go into, combine the sites and re, just redo it. We're not raising the structure to the ground, it's still a good structure. It has good bones to it, it just needs to be gutted and redone. And the entire site needs to be brought up to a magnificent, beautiful landscaping. It's just, it's a shame that it looks the way it is today and I'm very happy that Mr. Bell has committed the resources to do this at this location. Makes my job a little easier. Let's really quickly go back again, not to belabor the point, but at 2708, there are short-term rentals, there's a lot of police activity, the chain link fence, and only on part of the property. We don't know why the entire property's not secured. It's been recently painted and some sod's been put down due to threat from code enforcement. I'm not saying anything negative to the owner seller, just, that's the reality. Clearly insufficient irrigation, the interior of the dwellings need to be gutted. There is no security or sight lighting that is meaningful today. And it is by all extents a blighted eyesore and an attractive nuisance. It's just the nature of where the property is located, set back on the street. So really there are no eyes and so it allows a lot of negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. So again, the view, the existing views on the left and the proposed views on the right, this is what my client wants to do with the entirety of this block, is to combine the sites, make them aesthetically pleasing, keeping the aesthetic architecture of 2700 to combine it with 2708. So you'd have a much more beautiful effect going not only from just the corner, but the entirety of the block. Again, you have the front view and what, again, what we want to do to combine that with 2700. You have the view looking then to the south. Again, you start seeing all that just open space that needs to be, one, blocked off for security and privacy purposes, but two, we didn't want just a white wall facing Broadway. So we're going to decorate that, maybe with some crawling fig or other landscaping amenities that are both sustainable and will give a sense of place and bring the, the street into the sidewalk closer together, looking like that. And then, again, from the far corner, this just needs, it's outside of a structure being there. It needs a lot of landscaping. We have to wall it off, so we wanted to put even more landscaping in that corner, which is why the wall is set back a little bit. And you'll notice, I'll go back a second, I don't have it. In the site plan, again, I said it before, we're proposing to have the wall set back a little bit from the sidewalk to allow for some shade trees and other amenities to be planted there for the benefit of the public, so it's not just a wall. I'm talking about community collaboration. With this, we've tried our best to reach out to the neighborhood. We're very well aware of how beautiful the Old Northwood neighborhood is. It is, it's beautiful, it's landscaped, the houses are amazing. And we were lucky enough to speak with some homeowners about their interest. And what, they wanted were the same goals as my client. They wanted a safe and secure neighborhood. They wanted curb appeal, something that could really cement investment on that property to start, kickstart investment on Broadway. And they wanted something that was going to last and be sustainable and not be pretty today and in two years be another something else, like a flop motel. So taking those in mind, we worked with them and again, we've spoken with city engineering. We spoke with the CRA director to get the CRA's general ideas. And again, if Allison's here, if you have any questions regarding the CRA plan. We met this morning, not at the last second, that was the only time they can get together with Old Northwood and they were, they were pleased. I, they're not here, they weren't going to be here today, I can tell you unequivocally. There are other people, Mr. Green was on that meeting as well, Mr. Bell was on that meeting, Ms. Claude was in that meeting. They were very pleased. They were very excited, in fact, they were asking, when, if approved, when do you expect to start? And I said, well, the shovels are ready to go. So long as we have to get whatever additional minor site plan approvals might be needed for the wall, we want to speak to the police department about the alleyway and figuring out the best way to protect that and to make it beautiful. You know, we opened with trying to reach out to the neighborhood. Summertime, some people are gone. We remain open and will remain open throughout the entire process, both if approved and afterwards with the neighborhood. Mr. Bell's a long-term landowner, he's a corporate citizen who wants to remain there. We exchanged cell phone numbers with the board direct, board president and Mr. Bell so they could speak to each other. And that's the kind of corporate citizen and landowner and landlord he wants to be. There's never been a problem in his existing facility at 2700. There's no reason why there'd be a problem at 2708. But he wants to be part of the solution of Broadway, recognizing that it takes private investment and private property owners to put this kind of money into a property, to kickstart the redevelopment of Broadway. I'll leave you with this, we spoke with the CRA and I said, well, what's your plan? What is your plan, you know, outside of the anchor property and others, what's the plan? And they want to encourage, because of Raibovich, marine-based industry to come on Broadway. Now, I've dealt with marine industries down in Fort Lauderdale and I can tell you, they don't really mix so hot with residential neighborhoods for a host of reasons, both noise, smell, all of the things. I'm not saying that it's a bad plan at all. I'm just saying that for this location, at this property, in this block, this is the best and highest use of the property today. And I think with the significant investments in the community and neighborhood that Mr. Bell's prepared to make, it really is a win-win for the city. Again, we feel that we've met all the standards respectfully for a Class B special use permit and just wanted to bring up these other things to show you the commitment that Mr. Bell has to the city and to the neighborhood. And with that, in summary, again, we believe that the intangibles are really what makes this project great. There's clearly going to be a reduction in crime and blight. That's not an opinion. That's fact. Will be increase in curb appeal and property value. That's a fact. That's not an opinion. It will maintain the residential look and feel. You've seen those images. It'll have a positive impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding residents. It's going to eliminate what is happening at twenty-seven oh eight. It's going to unitize the entire parcel and secure that area, which really is at the beginning of Northwood, north of Twenty-Fifth Street. We think other property values may increase, likely will, they certainly won't decrease based upon this. And there is clearly going to be a reduction in burden in city services. But most importantly, again, Mr. Bell wants to be a partner in the community to help meet and achieve the goals outlined for the Broadway corridor, as we understand them to be, and to make a significant investment in this property. I am done with my presentation. If you have any questions, there was one thing I wanted to do as part of my presentation, but I wanted to see if you had questions first. That's Mr. Green. Mr. Green, I don't want to call counsel, but Jim's lived here his whole, basically his whole life and lived on Broadway off Thirty-Eighth? Thirty-Eighth. So I wanted, just as, both as a land use attorney and a civil rights attorney, that we both do, I wanted to get his, to finish off his take as a local of this project and what it can mean to the community. Jim?
Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Thomas, it's been a long time. Mr. Hyman. I moved back to Florida in nineteen seventy-six to start a three-year stint at the Public Defender's Office. And I didn't have a lot of money. I moved to five-ten Thirty-Eighth Street and lived there from, let's see, I think that was my second residence. I lived there from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen seventy-nine. I used to travel up and down the Broadway corridor. The, frankly, I have not seen the Broadway corridor improve any in the last forty-two, forty-three years. I drive by there on my way to the Palm Beach Rowing Association boathouse on Australian Avenue just for a change of scenery, probably two or three times a week. Still hasn't improved. There are very little landscaping. I think you saw a lot of the grass there, which was patchy and brown. And there's a few trees in the median. And for at least that five-block area from Twenty-seventh Street to Forty-Second, excuse me, Thirty-second Street, there's very, very little landscaping. Obviously, from these renderings, this will be a huge improvement. I think it'll be a jewel for that five-block area. And I think it would be a significant improvement for the Broadway corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And with that, we conclude our presentation. I don't know if you have any questions at this time for us, or you want to wait.
Do the members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mr. Bell, I want to thank you for running a responsible operation and thank you for the expert testimony as well today. That was, I appreciate that. I don't have any questions on the use. I think it's a natural extension of an existing operation. And on that point, I think since two group home type-three uses can't be within twelve-hundred feet of each other, this has to be a natural extension of an existing use. And you talked a lot about the combination of the uses across one single site. I think one of the conditions relates to the unity of title. So my question is, the twenty-seven hundred existing building currently in operation as a group home is a contributing structure in Old Northwood Historic District. So how do you see the extension of this with the unity of title? With, is this becoming part of the historic old neighborhood as a single site, essentially? And how has the Historic Preservation Group been a part of the combination of the site, the extension of the wall, the new covered walk across to the existing parcel? And is the property owner applicant considering the historic context of this whole neighborhood in its thinking about consistency with the surrounding uses and compliance with the general use standards?
Thank you for those questions, Mr. Burgess. Part of the situation that we are faced with at this moment is that we need to get before you, before we can get to those other boards, to talk to them. They're not a requirement to go there, but we are offering. And whether you want to make it a condition, we're willing to do that too, to go to the CRA Advisory Board because if they can get a visualization, and certainly if you think Historic Board or whatever would like to have some comment on this, we welcome that opportunity with regard to whether this is an extension, whether this is a historic site. We just aren't aware. You're saying that as if you know that as a fact, so I'll take that for what it is. If it is, then whatever we can do to make that, to solidify the existing structure. I think that when it was rebuilt in twenty sixteen, right, Rahim? Yeah, I think when Mr. Bell went in in twenty fifteen to redo the twenty-seven hundred structure from the inside, I think that was all taken into consideration. I'm not sure about the historic nature of it. I'm not sure really if the city considers this part of the historic district. I don't think it is. I think that it might be. I just don't know. And that's what I'm saying, we're fully ready, willing, and able to entertain all of these conversations and to subject ourselves to all these kinds of reviews to make sure that it is a sustainable site based upon how you explain it. That being said, with the surrounding uses and structures, we didn't get too much into what they actually look like, but they're all basic, older multifamily, one, two-story multifamily structures that really don't have any architectural remarkability about them.
Yeah, and it might be a question for staff in terms of what consistency would this be required as under a unity of title with assuming that the twenty-seven hundred building is a contributing structure in the Old Northwood neighborhood, which I believe it is. I've seen the map recently.
Okay.
How would that extension apply to the rest of the site?
And to the extent that that would require any exterior facade improvements or something, happy to do it.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, so you have the existing facility. The proposal is to acquire, well, you already acquired the property, I assume, and to do what you propose. My sense is, is the structure going to simply be used for residential use?
Yes.
And so the detox services are going to actually continue to be on the portion where they're offered now, right?
Well, let me, yes and no. Let me clarify that. Detoxification services, there's nothing really medical about it. It's simply being given medications to allow yourself naturally to detoxify so that you can do it comfortably. That medication is given by a doctor or a nurse at that location. So you have, actually, in the twenty-seven hundred, there are two licenses there. There's detoxification and residential treatment currently at that location. We weren't clear about that till this morning, actually. That's, I apologize for that. So we want to extend the residential treatment. At the, there's a floor plan that's proposed, but we didn't present it to you because it needs to be vetted by the city. But it's could take the ten units that are there, take two of those units, make them into office administrative use so that when you're in residential treatment, generally, you don't need medication anymore. The medication is simply to help wean you off while you're there. If you're there mostly for alcoholism, it's very difficult for people that are especially functioning alcoholics who finally realize they need help. The reason they haven't gotten help is because of withdrawal symptoms. And they've relied upon alcohol to function, or they've relied upon other substances to function. So they're fearful of coming off of those substances, they can't function. So the medications are given, it's called Vivitrol for alcohol, or Suboxone for opiates, allows them, in a detox environment, to not have withdrawal symptoms. But it's honestly, it's simply like a spa hotel. They're just relaxing. They're convalescing. There's no medical services, no blood, there's no chelation therapy, there's no medical. It looks entirely residential inside. So for the twenty-seven oh eight structure, besides it being rehabilitated entirely on the inside, it will continue to look, function, and be like a residential structure, but for the fact that the people that are staying in that structure may receive their counseling services, which overwhelmingly, that's what drug and alcohol treatment is, just counseling. Just counseling. So they would get that counseling likely in the twenty-seven oh eight building so that they don't unnecessarily traverse back and forth.
Okay, and the existing facility, you said, is already licensed?
Yes.
And it was, and one of my questions, and maybe it's for the staff, is the classifications that property already holds that allows it's used to be what it's being used for right now?
Well, it wasn't, previously, it was, twenty-seven hundred was an assisted living facility. And under the city's zoning code, the determination of those kinds of uses fall within a definition of group home. And if you have more than fifteen residents, it falls into a type-three. Type-one is up to six, type-two is up to fourteen, type-three is fifteen or more. So the ALF use that was there before was a group home type-three. The use that's going in there now meets the same definition of a group home type-three, so it was simply a turnkey operation at that time.
What I mean is the existing facility.
Mm-hmm. The existing facility was an ALF before.
Right, and it's currently?
Currently, it's detoxification services and residential treatment services together.
All right, is it classified as a group home type-three?
Yes.
Angela Van Panen is on administrator. The existing use basically was, the way our code is written today, we have different classifications for group homes. Type-three, traditionally, we used to see it as for ACLFs, elderly, a type-five, which we used to see for detox facilities. We realized years ago that that probably was in violation of ADA and fair housing. So basically, that, it was, that facility was allowed to go in. We worked with them, with their attorneys, with an agreement. And what city staff at that point started to do, it's been a long road, was update our code. Like I said, long road, four years, it's been a while. So hopefully, on July twenty-sixth, I can get that before City Commission. To actually rewrite our entire code as it pertains to group homes, detox, community residence, anything dealing with that. So that particular use went in with an agreement between city and attorneys for that particular use because these are spanning it. And the way we had an agreement with a policy until we can actually change our regulations was that any facility detox, residential treatment, we would treat like a group home type-three. And it has to go through the same process as a group home type-three. That's why you're seeing this as a group home type-three.
Yeah, and what was confusing me a little bit, and I'm not entirely clear on, is in the packet that we received, it says the property, this, the applicant's property, the hotel part of it, is currently zoned Broadway mixed-use district, building type-one. And currently, a group home type-five is not permitted in the zoning district. And so what I was just trying to clarify is, the existing property just south of that, that the owner owns and runs the detox facility, is classified as a group home type-three. I, that's what I understand.
Well, the way that code is, text is written in the staff report, probably should have said a type-three and just with a detoxification type with it. But basically, it's, we might allow uses in office commercial. And today, yes, a group home type-five, and the way our code is written today, is not allowed in OC. However, based on policy, based on meeting fair housing and ADA requirements, what the city has done is said that any residential treatment detoxification will go through the same process as a group home type-three because we can't discriminate between the elderly people and the people going through detoxification. So that's the process we're going through now. I guess the report probably should have said as a type-three, but what they're doing with it. So that's the distinction between them.
Okay, but to make it simple, right now, the existing facility has a qualification group type-three, right?
It has a, it has approval for BTR and is operating as a residential treatment facility, I believe. That's what the BTR says. Need to get into group home type, but that's what it's operating as.
And we're simply asking for an expansion into the north side of the property.
Correct.
And to be, and to continue to be used for the same, to provide the same services. And so it's just simply that this lot, this particular lot that it's on, is currently simply a type-one property.
Well, today, it's just residential apartments. It did have an approval for a type-three years ago, but they since lost that. It did have approval for a type-home, group home type-three, I believe, years and years ago, but they lost it. So, but right now, it's just apartments.
Okay, so let me ask, just related to that, because it's a little unusual that normally, that matters that come before the board, we're really focused on, we rarely get into the sort of the business purposes. Here, we're really focused on that.
That was Mr. Lynn's taking you down that path. Staff kind of stayed, because we look at it as a group home, whether it's detoxification, whether it's elderly, whether it's whomever, in terms of will that fit in with the character and meet the requirements of the area? That's how staff looks at it. We don't concentrate on one group or another.
So what other agencies or what other boards in the city approve particular businesses for location? For instance, detox facilities. Obviously, the state of Florida has to license it, right? Is there any licensing issued by the city of West Palm Beach for a particular facility?
Well, they have their own requirements that they have to go through when they get their BTR for licensing. And the staff, I'm not quite sure what they require, what our business types people require to give them a BTR. I'm not quite too, I don't know if they consider it medical facility. I didn't look that up before I came downstairs, so I'm not quite sure to answer that question. What we require as a city in terms of seeing the requirements from medical and stuff like that. I don't think we require that because we don't regulate that part of it. That's regulated by another entity, the state, or whomever regulates that. We don't regulate that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can let you know just for, the Department of Health comes in because of the nature of the use. They also come in, DCF comes in, DEA will come in because you have an onsite pharmacy if you're dispensing medications. So DEA Drug Enforcement has its eyes on there. And obviously, the State Attorney's Office with the Sober Room Task Force.
I understand.
I happen to be a member of the Legislative Task Force and helped write many of the legislations that got rid of a lot of the bad actors. I'm proud of that.
All I was trying to determine is whether there is any board that this had already approved a type of business. What we're being asked to do is to grant a variance, zoning variance. And I was just trying to inquire whether the business, the facility, was required to obtain other licensing from the city of West Palm Beach?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if it helps, the city has made the determination that in order to be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act and the ADA, it will treat applications of this type in the Broadway mixed-use district as an application for a class-three use facility. In order to do that, it requires a Class B special use permit. Your obligation, then, is to determine whether this application meets the standards provided for the Class B. And that's actually what's before you today.
I appreciate you clarifying that because I think that's, I think that helps us.
Mr. Chair, a question, I guess, to continue on your train of thought, just, did this have to go before any other city board, such as the planning board?
No. And to your point, that's part of the ADA situation, is that cities historically not understanding, which is why I bought Mrs. Claude, don't understand these uses unless you've been involved with drug and alcohol treatment yourself. You just don't know, and it's what we see in movies and we hear, and we hear the horror stories in the news. And so what cities did in reaction to that years ago was to start to carve out these uses as if they're different and put them somewhere else. And they're not different. It was just based upon preconceived notion that they're different. So we started to discriminate against them. And the city's code does that, not intentionally, meaning, well, it is intentional. It's just from ignorance and stigma and lack of information. And so what the American Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act says, look, you gotta, we gotta look at the use for what it is. And it's a residential-like care home. That's all it is. And in actuality, again, Ms. Claude can come back up, it's way less intense than an assisted living facility because those facilities have higher nursing ratios, have higher deliveries. There's much more happening in an ACLF or any kind of convalescent home, nursing home, that all fit within these categories. I've also seen the city's code that they're proposing to update their code, and this type of use continues to be, under the new code, an allowable use in the BMUD Broadway corridor because it still fits within the residential character and will maintain a residential character and use. That's why when people hear the use, that's why we wanted to dispel any myths or stereotypes with you telling this Claude, so you understand what's really going in there. We didn't want to emphasize the use as much as explain it to you. We have nothing to hide. It's been a great, great citizen with a great quiet use that just simply wants to expand his business into better the neighborhood with it.
Are there any other questions? The board members?
I know staff wants to do this present too. Angela's kicking me to sit down, so. Right, we're obviously here if you have more questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll have the staff report, although we sort of heard it, but we'll go forward with it. Sure. Sure. Feel free to pass them around. That's fine. If you just pass them around, that'll be easier. Thank you. Thank you. Don't worry.
Good afternoon. My name is Elena Wooten. I'm the planner representing staff for this case 3390. We've had extensive conversation about it, so I'm gonna try not to be redundant and say that staff is recommending, well, staff has determined that the Class B special use permit meets the applicable standards and the general special use, specific use and additional standards for group homes as set forth by the city's zoning land development and regulations. Therefore, staff is recommending approval, subject to the condition that prior to the issuance of any building permit and/or issuance of any business tax receipt for the use of the 2708 Broadway Avenue as a group home type three facility, a unity of title shall be recorded in the public records of Palm Beach County, unifying the property with 2700 Broadway Avenue. Application for a unity of title shall be made through the city's Engineering Service Department. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Has the city received any comments from members of the public or the neighborhood with regards to this application?
I received one phone call on yesterday, asking about just the details of the application, if it was an expansion, or if it was to create an additional facility, a brand-new facility. So I explained it as an expansion of an existing facility. But that was all that, all the inquiries from the public that I've received up to now.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. So, going back to my question earlier about the extension of the use in part of the historic nature of the building next door as part of this operation, what's the process to ensure that the whole parcel is considered for consistency with what the current historic district standards are? If the unity of title prompts that requirement, is that an extra condition that we would impose onto the property to make sure that if it is treated in unison, under consistent use, that it would also have to be part of that historical approval process? What's the, what's the, what right way that could-
I'll let Angela answer that.
Again, Angela Van Penning, Zon Administrator. It's difficult for us, because you're talking about two separate processes, since the building is not in a district, so it's nothing that we can require them to do. We can work with them and try to get, you know, some design and compatibility with the building next door, but it's not a requirement, so nothing I can say based on Northwood and what the Northwood district requirements are, and what the city's historic preservation requirements are. Nothing we can do. I mean, they can change the windows out, do all that stuff. There's nothing I can do based on the code, because it's not in the district. But we will try to work with the applicant on trying to blend it in with the existing building.
My understanding is, half of the site is in the historic district, though. If you're creating a unity of title, half of the property is now in a historic district? Because 2700-
Yeah, but it's still not gone to, it would be two separate zoning districts, and that's because it's not in the district, I still cannot apply it. We can work with them and see, we can get, what we can get out of them as far as the historic district. Again, you're talking about a hotel that was built back in the 60s, in terms of, not a whole lot there, I mean, in terms of, they can probably prove a whole lot on it to blend it in. And again, we will work together with the applicant to see what we can do with this property. But there's nothing I can do legally to require them.
The unity of title by itself doesn't require a consistent application for any site improvements if it's considered one site plan at that point?
I mean, we still look at it as one site plan, per se, but you're talking about landscaping, site wall, stuff like that. I'm assuming you're talking about building stuff like that, which, no, we don't look at it that way. We would look at lands, you know, we run the wall down and look at landscape and stuff like that.
It wouldn't be our purview anyways, to dictate what the historic interpretation would be for the building standards themselves, in terms of the existing structure being renovated. I was just thinking, if it's one site plan, then it, then there, my question was about how that is consistently applied across the site when it comes to the perimeter wall, the covered architectural walkway that they're referring to.
Yeah, we would look at stuff like that, yeah. In terms of the wall, the walkway and stuff like, and we would try to do our best, again, then work with the CRA, to basically determine the designs, things they want to see on Broadway.
And the applicant could, in theory, go to Old Northwood Historic District and voluntarily contribute their entire site as part of the district?
Mr. Burgess, yes. Again, we weren't entirely sure about these processes. I know that Saint Allison's here from the CRA, listened in on these conversations. Our only concern is just, we want the site built and done, and the more bureaucracy there is, and more people hands in, like, we're willing to go to the CRA Advisory Board, we're willing to go to any board, have people comment in the neighborhood. We're just anxious to start construction of this light, of the landscaping, whatever. So we just want to make sure that we're not three, four, or five months in, and we're still, you know, waiting for boards to be done. So the answer is yes. We'll do whatever is recommended. I just want to, you know, because we don't know the process as well. I know Mr. Green knows them better than I do, and he can maybe speak to it. Because I'm not sure, again, with the structure, but Mr. Green had a comment that I, he was going to bring up.
I've got a lot of personal experience with the Palm Beach Historic Preservation Board, in order to get our house demolished on South Flagler and rebuild it. I've also got a lot of experience over in the town of Palm Beach with kind of the intersection of, you know, when you're trying to unify properties. I represented Julia and the late David Koch on their properties between Barton Avenue and Clark Avenue. One was landmarked, one wasn't, and we unified the title, and all that did is just shifted the jurisdiction for future requests for approval and improvements to the Landmarks Commission from the Archcom, Architectural Review Commission. It's just something that can be worked out.
Right, okay. Yeah, and that's my need for clarification here, is that if it's treated as one site, there's a unity of title, that is essentially requiring some conditions on one part of the site, but not another part of the site. I think the long-term view of this is that they could take, add for LARM tax benefits for the site, but not really invest that in the same, the north half of the site for that improvement value.
Well, once you're designated, and I'm speaking more about Palm Beach, because that's where I practice mostly, on my land use, is, once you're designated historical, unless you're de-designated, you'll be subject to landmarks going forward. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Chair, I think it would be important for us to remember now that the question of whether the buildings comply with historical standards would have to be found within the standards for deciding if they're entitled to a Class B use permit. That's a decision that you would have to make, but you would have to find one of these standards that would be met or violated if it doesn't. I'm not sure that I've seen that in it, but that's where that would come, because we are just considering a Class B use permit and the standards for approving it.
Correct, yeah. I mean, I see two places. The general special use has to show consistency with surrounding uses, and if half of this future site is within a historic district, then for consistency's sake, the entire site should be treated with the same criteria. And the other additional standards for group homes is that, since there can't be two group homes within 1,200 feet of each other, this has to be considered one property, this has to be considered one operation. And so, because of the nature of that, the consistency should be applied across the board.
But Mr. Burgess, I went back, Angela Van Penning, Zon Administrator, again, that property, the other property is not in the historic district. That's what I kept reading, it's not in the historic district. It's in BMO, so it's not part of the Old Northwood Historic District. So it's not, maybe contributing, per se, but it's not actually in the district. Maybe an old building, but it's so-
I must be, okay, I must have seen an-
Yeah, it's not in the district.
The current, okay, the-
The district stops at the alley.
The current historic district map on the city's website shows that property 2700 within the historic district.
We had it on BMO. So I don't think, I don't think Northwood, I'm almost positive, Old Northwood does not go out to get Broadway.
On that corner.
So it's not in the district.
The map, it looked like it did, but.
Can I ask, we're on staff presenting evidence. Do you mind sharing with us the, why this recommendation came apart, and what the thought process was for the city and staff? Maybe that would help. Why don't you lay the groundwork of why this recommendation was put forth before us? This unity of title. Why did you all include this? What was your thought process? What was the basis for this? Because maybe that will help clarify for at least myself, if not others.
The basis is based on, staff looked at it, again, we looked at it based on a group home. We looked at the fact that a group home was approved here years ago. So it's been through the process already. We don't look at whether it's for residential detox, ACLF, we just look at it, will a group home along Broadway comply with the group home standards in the surrounding area? And that's how we looked at it. Most of these older hotels that we have along Broadway, they've fallen disrepair over the years, as you've seen, and usually, if we can get a use like a group home in there, is usually taken care of, is maintained, as having the motels, hotel motels, that we have a lot on Broadway, or the rooms that they rent for a week, that we have on Broadway, some of our older hotels. So that's what staff looked at it, again.
So let me clarify, apologies, I was more narrowly focused. That's why you all came up and said it complied. I'm asking, why are you also including, what was the purpose behind the need for this unity of title? That's a recommendation that you put in front of us, as one of the conditions. It's that narrow, the unity of title, because it sounds like that might be what we're narrowly focused on. Not, I understand why you all went through, based on your plan, it complied. Right, it's that narrow. What was the basis and the purpose of including that as one of the conditions?
You got two masks on, trying to hear you through your mask. Basically, for the unity of title, based on, because we look at it as one operation. I mean, in reality, it's one operation, and what we looked at, it just happened to be two buildings. So a staff always makes a requirement that you unify the properties, therefore, there's no waiver required, and as they're going to do a wall and all this stuff, so it's just simple and easy for them to do that. Because if you do a wall, then if it's separate, then you got to do two separate permits for two separate properties. So basically, we look at it as one overall development, as one facility.
Just like we've seen it before, when it's an individual resident who happens to buy an adjoining property, usually, thank you very much. I think that might help.
Ms. Burley, just to add to that, I don't want, you know, what we wanted to commit to the city early on, by offering that, in addition to the site planning, for simple, is to immediately eliminate any concern that this will get approved and eventually spun off. You know, literally spun off, now you have two, no. These will forever be together as a single-use property, in addition to the site planning things, for that very reason. And again, no one even asked us about that. We were saying upfront, we want to alleviate, assuage any concerns, that you're going to get an approval, and then subdivide it and sell it off, and go, now there's two, and no, you're stuck, and asking for permission or forgiveness instead of approval. That's also why we offered that from the very beginning of the application.
All right, any other questions for the city? And I guess, next to, are there any persons here who would like to make a comment? Other than the applicant in the city?
In addition to the telephone call received by staff, we did receive a Google voicemail that I'll read into the record. Good morning, today is June 22nd at 10:00 a.m. This is George Caesar, property owner of 517 to 535 25th Street. I've got a letter of a public hearing regarding 2708 Broadway Class B special use permit. I do object to allowing a type three group home there. I do not want that near me, and that is a single-family neighborhood, and I don't think it's conducive to the South Hall. Interpretation of the area and the redevelopment plans that are in line. So any questions? My name is George Caesar. He leaves his telephone number. I'm leaving this voicemail as my vote against a type three group home. Thank you.
Okay, since there aren't any other questions from the public, we'll now go to executive session. All right, Mr. Fields, do you have any? Okay, Mr. Woods? Ms. Barlow? Mr. Hyman?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Burgess? Okay. All right, does anyone have a motion?
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number 3390, a request by Ryan Abrams Esquire on behalf of New Hampshire Holdings LLC, for a Class B special use permit to allow for a group home type three in the Broadway Mixed Use District, Building Type Zoning, Building Type One Zoning District. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in section 94-36 E3 and 4, and also the standards in section 94-273 D28 and sections 94-273 A2 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the Class B special use permit is made conditional upon the restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards listed in the staff report dated July 1, 2021, which I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulation, and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. And more specific, the condition reads, prior to issuance of any building permit and/or issuance of any business tax receipt for the use of the 2708 Broadway Avenue as a group home type three facility, a unity of title shall be recorded in the public records of Palm Beach County, unifying the property with 2700 Broadway Avenue. Application for a unity of title shall be made through the city's Engineering Service Department.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All right, Ms. White, could you please call the roll for the vote?
Christopher Cameron.
Approve.
Malika Barlow.
I approve.
Michael Hyman.
I approve.
Michael Wood.
Approve.
Alfred Fields.
Approve. Okay, the motion is approved on a unanimous basis. So congratulations. Okay, going to the remainder of the agenda, doesn't look like there's any administrative appeals. Is there any unfinished business? Don't have any listed? No new businesses listed? Any of the board members want to make any comments before we adjourn? Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn? If I could real quickly, Angela, how do we look for upcoming meetings? Do we, does it look like we've got petitions?
We have, again, trying to remember, we have, I think, I may not have anything for next month. And then bringing down the schedule to look at it and see. I don't think I have anything for next month. You know, they come in spurts, in terms of, they come in spurts in terms of application. I don't think we have anything for next month.
What's the cutoff date?
I'll have hope, send an email out, just to say what we have for August and September. So I have a, if we have anything, I have a send an email out.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask, okay, thank you.